All right, the King County. The King County Council, now the Bothell City Council is now back and we are going to continue the public hearing, AB 16-115, continued public hearing regarding potential plan and code amendments to the Fitzgerald 35th Southeast and Canyon Creek 39th Southeast Subarea Plan, plans in the Bothell Municipal Code Chapters 12.50 and 12.52. And we are going to start off with a presentation by the acting city attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I just had a couple of brief comments to introduce this matter. You'll recall that we're here because in part there was a growth management hearings board decision that overturned some 2014 amendment to the Fitzgerald Subarea. The current process has been going on since earlier this year to work with the community and community development to identify some options for addressing issues that have arisen in the, in the subarea. The goal tonight is to try and provide a framework to simplify the choices. I've been at the last several council meetings and there have been some very complicated charts to look at that are not easy to decipher. We're going to try and cut through that a little bit. The staff recommendation tonight is to ask that the council direct, direct staff to bring back three options on the meeting on July 19th, I believe. And option number one would be effectively a do-nothing option. The existing LID overlay has been approved by the growth management hearings board by virtue of its decision. And so it can stand on its own. The third option to jump ahead a little bit would be to repeal that LID overlay and replace it with the city's basic code, possibly with some amendments to address the environmental issues related to the subarea. And the middle option would be some hybrid of those two that would produce the best of both worlds in terms of providing environmental protection while allowing greater ability of property owners to make reasonable use of their property. So that's the staff recommendation tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Tom and his staff for further presentation.
Good evening, Council. In your packet, we've included some information from the last public hearing from last week. We've also put together comments that we've received from property owners, environmental groups, and developers. I would point out that comments that we've received from developers since the packet went out included one from Sunquest Homes, Bob Vick, and D.R. Horton, Jennifer Reiner. Mike Patterson sent me an email at 4:00 p.m. He's with the Master Builders Association and was present at the meeting last week. He sent me an email at 4:00 today indicating he's, he's still reviewing the Fitzgerald ordinance. He has some concerns that it's restrictive and inflexible and they'll be bringing more comments forward on July 12th. Tonight, we have Bruce Blackburn and Paul Fent, and they're, they're prepared tonight to cover some of the questions that Council had from last week, including a comparison of the LID measures that are currently in the overlay and forthcoming LID requirements that will be a part of the adopted amendments citywide later on this year. So I'll turn the, the time over to Bruce Blackburn and let him field questions.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Basically, the idea behind it is that Paul Fent has a really nice kind of a matrix that we're going to put up on the screen here in just a moment. He's going to kind of go through the differences between the current Fitzgerald low-impact development and what's coming down the way from the 2016 LID provisions that we're going to be applying. And he's got a couple more comments he's going to provide. So I'm actually just going to turn it right over to Paul in case there's any specific questions from, from me. But thank you.
So I already heard a complaint about complicated charts, but this is one that is intended to simplify. So if you can follow along a little bit here, and I'll give you a general feeling for what is, this is showing. But the purpose of this is to answer a question that came up last time about comparing, well, what is the difference between our overlay that's there and what, how does that compare to the future stormwater management required overlays for LID? So if you look at this and think about every, this is kind of in quadrants. And if you think everything to the left is really reflecting what the current overlay requires and provides, and everything to the right is what everything will be in the future or in the, when the new stormwater low-impact design stuff, the LID stuff, is adopted. Everything above, in the top half of the thing, relates to land uses or existing conditions, like is it forest, is it impervious surface? Everything on the bottom relates to what kind of development is proposed and what kind of actions you need to take based on the development that's proposed. So, so looking at this, and we'll start at the very top right, and you'll see that in the existing condition, and this is on the overlay as it exists now, and again, these, this is generalized in order to help everyone understand this. This is generalized, but right now, if you have forest, you need to, the lid overlay says you would protect the forest up to 60%, which means preserve it. There would be anything allowed. Undeveloped open land that's not forest or impervious, you would again protect up to 60%, and the remaining would be what I've said is controlled, which means you'd have to apply a stormwater standard to it. The impervious requirement, as the overlay exists, is that you would have to control effective impervious area to less than 15% and the remaining impervious area you would have to control. So that's the way the overlay works on existing conditions and existing lands. So let's go to the right, upper right quadrant, and this is what the standards would be for the application of low-impact design. Now, for simplicity, there are two columns that are here, but for simplicity, I'll only talk about one. And the only difference between the two columns has to do with how big the development is. So if you notice at the very top in the right, upper right quadrant says less than 5,000 square feet of impervious surface is proposed. That's a smallish development. And then the column on the right, the heading is more than 5,000 square feet impervious. Those columns are virtually identical. And for the explanation, I think I can just talk about one of them and that'd be enough. There's almost no difference between the two, and the differences are very subtle. So thinking about, well, what is the new LID going to ask us to do? Well, if you look to the right and it says the existing condition is forest, the new LID has no specific preservation requirement. It only requires that the hydrology from the site is as if it were a forest. So you have a choice of retaining a forest or you provide stormwater controls or LID controls that mimic a forest hydrology, but there's no specific preservation requirement. The same thing for undeveloped open and, and for impervious. There are no specific requirements in the new LID that says you have to do this, you have to preserve this, or you can have no effective impervious area. So that's the first difference to point out between the existing condition and the future LID manual. I'll point out that the future manuals do prefer and say your first choice should be preservation, but it does not in any way prescribe it or tell you that you have to do preservation. So the next thing to think about, or to go is stay, staying in the upper right quadrant, and you'll see a line that says choose a path based on size of impervious trigger. Again, that's just the size of the development. But the words under there, this is where we get into talking about the difference between presumption and demonstration. So you have two choices. So you notice some words there, and then it says, or, your two choices under the new manual are what's called demonstrative performance, which just says you do whatever development you need to do and what, apply whatever stormwater controls you need to apply with LID being a preference, and you have to meet a standard. But however you get to that standard is up to the developer. Or your other choice is do these specific items, these lid manual presumptions, and we will approve it based on you having select things, selected things from the list. So again, you have the choice between demonstrative, you do whatever development you want to do, but you have to control it to a standard, or you pick things off the list, you're doing things on, off the list, and is, and we're going to presume that you will be meeting the standard. So let's go to the bottom half of the chart. So right now, if you go to the bottom left quadrant, right now, and look at the column that has a heading development, and underneath it says landscape roofs and other hard surfaces, these are the prescriptions in the overlay that are required. So right now, if you have, if part of your, the part of your development is landscape, there are no limits or requirements for that. If you look to the item that says roofs and look to the right, your prescription under the existing overlay is to do a vegetated roof. That's your choice, your first choice. If you don't want or can't do a vegetated roof, then it is included as, it's called a hard surface. It's just some, another impervious surface. So go down a little bit below roofs and you see other hard surfaces. Then this is where the prescriptions come in the current LID. And what those credits are referring to is how much credit you get for each applied LID. So I'll just pause for a second, so, and I'll say it again, so, because I'm trying to go in a nice pace so everyone can kind of follow along. But any impervious surfaces under the existing LID overlay that requires LID provides a certain amount of credit for applying that LID. And so those credits refer to the items to the right. But anyway, it's not really important to understand that as just, other than just know that the current LID code has LID requirements in it, and it generally provides pretty effective and comprehensive credit for applying those LIDs. Okay? So now let's go to the bottom right quadrant, and we'll just go down one of those columns. And what, so we'll, it's, it's the column that starts with new stormwater manual with LID. And you see the number one and the word soil standard. So that applies to landscape. So what the new LID code will have is says if you have whatever landscape you have in your new development, you have to apply what's called the soil standard. And the soil standard just means you have to enhance the soil in a certain way in order to be effective hydrologically. It doesn't matter for what we're talking about, what it means. But you are required to do the soil standard, whereas in the old LID, you had no restrictions or limitations or requirements to what to do with landscaped areas. So the next item, you'll see one, two, three, and four, where it has full dispersion, bioretention, et cetera. Those are the prescriptions that are required if you have a roof. So if you look over toward the left quadrant and it says roofs, and you move over to the right, and you find one, full dispersion, number one, full dispersion. So these items, one through four, are what are required. They're in that list. They're the presumption. Those are the items that are required in that order if you're building a roof. And you have to decide, so your first choice is full dispersion. If you cannot do that, your next choice is bioretention or rain gardens. If you cannot do that, your third choice is downspout diversion, dispersion. So those are the prescribed or the LID manual presumption requirements. So if you have a roof and you apply one of those, you'll be assumed to be and presumed to be in compliance with the LID manual. So it's just, it's an instruction manual that says do this, you'll be okay. You don't have any other proof that you have to make. So then we continue down, and you see the number one, and it says full dispersion, and you look to the left and it says other hard surfaces. So there's a list of, again, if you have a hard surface, and that means like a driveway or a sidewalk or patio or a street, your first choice is full dispersion, your next choice is permeable pavement or rain gardens or bioretention, your third choice is sheet flow dispersion. Once again, as long as you do one of those three items for each one of your hard surfaces, you've complied with the manual. There's no further expectation on demonstrating your compliance. So these things are, hopefully that made some sense. This is a good summary, I think, of, of trying, like, what's complicated in a stormwater manual, and try to present it so there's an ability to compare things about what you have now and what would be in the future. And there's a few things that we would, would make recommendations to you to change slightly, mainly the things on permeable pavement. But other than that, I think that this is a very good framework of how LID could be and should be applied to protect the water resources, stormwater resources in the basin. And that's what I have to explain for this.
All right, we've got people ready for questions. I think we wanted to, hold on, let me get back up to the prescribed, what we're going to do here. No, there it is. All right, council questions. Councilmember Sandberg, go ahead.
So it looks like to me that the requirements of the new stormwater manual with respect to development type are better and possibly clearer to the development community than our existing LID overlay. Is that correct?
I would say that they are actually quite similar to what you have right now, and they are certainly clearer.
Okay, so similar and clearer is better, in my opinion, than what we have now, when we're just looking at the bottom half of the chart. And then in terms of the top half of the chart, it looks as though our LID overlay is, is more protective of existing forest. And of course, we have maybe contention over how forest is defined and that we could do a better job defining forest. But it seems like the LID overlay does better in that area than the stormwater, the new stormwater manual does.
That's correct.
And so when I was watching the tape last week, and I, and it kind of applies to here, because you said that there's no, in the, in the new stormwater manual, there's no preservation requirement. It's just that whatever feature, whatever LID feature is chosen, it has to mimic the required forest hydrology. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So what would be an example, then, of a forest equivalent LID feature? And, and what standard it would meet in a demonstrative approach? Because we understand what a forest is. What's a, what, what does a forest equivalent LID feature look like?
So the, the, what we've been presenting kind of through the course of this has been really giving examples of two, two of the elements, and they are on this list. The first one being full dispersion, the second one being bioretention. So we, if bioretention is constructed according to the instructions in the manual, then we believe that that's reasonably equivalent hydrologically to forest hydrology, because it's intended to infiltrate the same amounts of water. And, and the wind, the way it was designed, it was designed for, so that it would have similar replicated hydrologic performance. So it was intended to be designed that way, to be like a forest. And so therefore, we agree that it is equivalent to a forest.
So when you say a bioretention facility, in, in my mind, I'm thinking like a bioswale?
There, there, there's, it's subtle differences, but bioretention is basically a soil line depression in the ground where the water, the only way the water leaves the site is through infiltration into the ground, or evaporation. It doesn't leave through a pipe. It doesn't leave through a control structure. It doesn't leave through an underdrain. It can only leave through infiltration into the ground.
Okay. Well, that's all the questions I have on this table.
You can ask any question you'd like, if you have others.
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily a question for our consultant here, but I'll toss this out here, because I sent this earlier, because we're, we're tasked with finding an approach that is hopefully going to be palatable to the stakeholders and withstand an additional appeal to the growth manager hearings board. So what I asked earlier was, is there an approach other than, sounds like the option one, the do-nothing approach, that we could take that, is there an approach that we would take that would not meet the final decision in order of the growth management hearings board? And that's probably a question that can be answered tonight. And I know that staff wants us to direct them to consider three options, but I'd also like to have a conversation about what else we could be doing. And, and so, I don't know, did you want me to talk a little bit more about my thoughts, about what I watched last week and the information that we have before us today?
Yeah. You have the floor.
Okay. So the last time, we had that complicated four pathway chart, and it's my opinion that although the demonstrative approach sounds attractive in the sense that you have a standard and then you have multiple options to achieve that standard, what, what I've heard from both sides is that prescriptive is better, because demonstrative, although it's flexibility, it has flexibility, it also has much greater uncertainty. And so what I'm looking as we move forward is a prescriptive approach. And what we have right now is a hybrid approach, and that doesn't seem to be working. And so I'm looking for a prescriptive approach. The other thing that I am, I would like to promote is a change of the underlying zoning in Zone 1. And when I'm talking about any kind of changes, I'm talking about just to Zone 1, because the, the LID regulations seem to be working, seem to be acceptable to people elsewhere in the, in the Fitzgerald area. And although it has been suggested to me that, well, we're just changing code to appeal to one certain group of property owners, that is what we do every time we address property-specific amendment requests for a comprehensive plan every year. So I don't see, if we were to make a change in Zone 1 only, that's any different than what we do with comprehensive plan changes, change requests every year. So I'm talking just with regards to Zone 1. So I favor the prescriptive approach, and I also favor looking at an underlying zoning of 9,600. So the area, Fitzgerald area, was originally zoned R 4,000 to protect the unique features of the North Creek watershed, and those unique features still exist today. The, the change to 5,400A was justified because of the potential expense of the 39th connector. And now that the 39th connector is not a part of the equation, I don't feel like the 5,400A zone is appropriate. I think R 9,600 is appropriate in Zone 1, because it also matches R 9,600 on the west side of 39th Street. Now that said, with R 9,600, I would like us to look at options that allow flexibility in lot size. So we had previous speakers talk about the possibility of reducing lot size, and I don't really care how far it gets reduced. I think in the code, it says 50% reduction. I don't really care how far those lot sizes get reduced, as long as we preserve and return the features that we, the environmental features that we originally started out in this process of preserving, which was forest cover and impervious area. And I, the groundwater recharge, to me, is a, is a really difficult topic that I don't want to address right now. And I think that we can do that with clear definition of what forest, what a forest is, and, you know, clear criteria for if you reduce lot size, lot circles, or the like, we can achieve that, we can achieve forest preservation and reduce impervious surface by doing it that way. I struggle with the concern over cut-and-fill and the shallow aquifer recharge resource and how to protect that, because we have some people saying that there is a shallow aquifer there. We have other people saying, you know, there's water that comes out of a seam in the strata. And it seems to me that we could draft clear prescriptive language that talks about protecting that. But I, I, when I look at this, when I look at this table, if we can achieve that forest preservation through lot size reduction and clustering, and also achieve impervious area reduction, then I'm comfortable with removing the LID overlay from Zone 1 and replacing it with R 9,600 that has prescriptive elements to it. The, you, we're already going to get the prescriptive elements of the new stormwater manual, but have prescriptive elements that encourage that flexibility of, of lot size reduction and clustering. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Sandberg just said. I, I'm curious, however, I'd like to know the council's take on whether it's supportable to take Zone 1 out and do something different with it, because I worry about setting a precedence that, well, it wouldn't be beneficial to, to the city. I also agree- I also agree about 9,600. Because then we could use the lot area reduction, I forget what it's called. But it sounds a little bit like clustering to me, but lot area averaging or whatever. I agree with the prescriptive. I have concerns about the test pits, which now are, I guess, in the record because we've been handed copies. When I see one test pit that...
Deputy Mayor, just real quick. City Clerk, has that entered into the record? Okay, thank you.
So when I see groundwater seepage near a spring of 1 to 2 gallons per minute, that seems like a lot of water. Also, it was done for 2022, 2015, which I think we, well, if we research, was probably one of the driest springs in recent history. There's seepage in a couple other places. So to me, it seems like a question about the water. And I guess I wonder, when developers go to develop, I assume they have to do test pits. And I guess I'm wondering how the regulations work in terms of what they find and what they'll then have to do. And I assume they can't make assumptions that it's dry and therefore, there's no problem and they just move forward. So is that something that you can answer?
The groundwater and shallow groundwater is complicated. Test pits are dug, and they're dug for different reasons. In the context of stormwater, they're dug mostly for infiltration and to see whether or not the LID is feasible. So there are really two main things that are done. One is that, what are the infiltration rates of the soil? Can the water move through the soil? And the second is, where's the water table, the high water table? So that there's an appropriate separation from the bottom of the facility to the groundwater. So there's a place for the water to go. As far as answering the question around, what do the test pits tell us about seepage and movement around in groundwater? That would be one way in order to look at an area more comprehensively to gain information in order to start to address the question you have. But it's fairly complicated.
Okay.
And it's not as straightforward to, stormwater is relatively straightforward to manage because it's very repeatable. And groundwater is more complicated because there's a lot of unknowns about it and it's less repeatable. So it's harder to just set a set of standards to it and say, if you do these three things, you'll meet the groundwater.
So the other question I had was in regards to, if we were to change the zoning to R 9,600, so then we could do lot size averaging, how, I assume, and maybe I'm wrong, that rather than a sewer system, then we're talking about septic. And then how does that play into the feasibility if there is higher groundwater?
Well, septic systems have, need the water table, or need to understand where the water table is in order to work. So that's, that can be, that can certainly cause limitation in where they would go and how they would be designed and how they would relate to the homes that are built.
So is the one that had the test pit with the nine-foot groundwater table, I assume that's a rather high groundwater level?
If it's nine feet down to the groundwater, that's actually very good in Western Washington.
Oh, it is, okay. Thank you. Because I had no idea. I just, to me, it seemed shallow. But I'm from the East Coast where we build basements. So I guess the other thing that I would like to see in terms of this list is the possibility of having forest density credit transfers. I had heard that in one of the sessions, there was some discussion that some neighbors would be willing to take on more forest so that other neighbors wouldn't have that need and they could develop. And so I would like to see that addressed somehow, if that's something that parties are willing to do. And then I'm a little torn about whether or not to have some sort of forest requirement rather than just no preservation. I'd like to see an option where there's some forest requirement. I don't know what that is, but... And then I think that's all of my comments and questions for now. Thank you.
Who would like to go next?
Do we have any more presentations from staff?
I don't believe so.
No, we're done. I think what we wanted to convey to the council is what you already are talking about. And that is, we're ready to enter into discussion of land use and land use matters and how they relate to the overlays. And so this is perfect timing. We won't have answers on land use questions tonight, but we're taking notes and will respond on the 19th of July.
Great, thank you. I have questions. Do you guys want me to go? So one of the things, I know you don't have it now, but one thing that would be helpful to find out is, I would like to see a timeline of the underlying zoning changes and why those changes were made from incorporation into the city for this area. Then the, so the cut and fill limitations, is there any cut and fill limitations in the new stormwater manual? It's not on your chart, so it's worth asking.
Yeah, specifically, we're avoiding groundwater on this. I'm not sure. And the reason is, is that one goes looking for what you need when you're doing the development and it's a really big manual. And it's not typical.
So one of the things that Councilmember Sandberg brought up, and one of the things that I'm noticing on your table here is that you consider the demonstrative approach to do the LID performance standard. Is that correct?
The demonstrative, this is, I took these words right out of the manual and of the charts. And so it's described as a demonstrative performance standard. You're allowed to use any BNP's. Is that kind of what you're asking?
Yeah, because I guess, when we talked about it in previous meetings, I assumed that that's actually prescriptive. But because it just, there's a standard that you have to meet. They don't care what, it doesn't really matter how you meet it, but there is a defined standard where that when you look at the lists, you know, you go down that list and you don't necessarily, you can get to the end of that list and do nothing. Is that correct? If none of those BNP's work for that type of surface, you could say, well, I tried to go through the list from full dispersion all the way down to perforated stub outs. Well, I guess you end up with a perforated stub out, which pretty much does nothing for hydrology. But is that the case?
So if your question is, is that can you go through the list? And if nothing applies, you're off, you're free?
Yeah, that's the question.
That's not true. The way it would be interpreted is that if nothing is feasible, then you're, I think you're forced in the demonstrative performance.
Are you sure about that? Because what if, okay, because if those things don't work to meet the LID performance standard, your vault would be infinitely large. Is that...
Yeah, so there's kind of two parts to this. One is that if you go through the presumptions through the list and nothing works, you're only left with the demonstrative. And doing the demonstrative is probably unlikely to work. But that's, you still have that choice and you still have it available to you.
Wow, so your interpretation would be you basically can't develop if you can't meet, if you go, if you take the option to go down the list and you can't do any of those things, which you can always do a perforated stub out, right?
But that only applies to rows. So I guess the way I would look at it is that you, and if I'm understanding your question, is that you may not get to do what you were hoping to do. But one can continue to, some of these feasibility elements are just related to the intensity of the development. So you could start saying, well, I can't get where I started, but I can back off and start doing this. And most of these, at some point, will eventually become feasible. And so it doesn't push you into, so I think there's always a way, you know, again, in a, just for simplicity of the discussion, there's always a way to start to reduce your development and these items in the list start, will eventually apply. And they're eventually become feasible, mainly the dispersion. And, but then you're not having the development that you might have started with. So then the other part of this is saying, well, these things don't really work here and so on. I can go to demonstrative and it might be a giant infinite vault. But if you can build a giant, slightly smaller than infinite vault and you get to develop everything you want, that is a pathway that's possible. It's difficult and it would be difficult, but it would be possible.
So another thing I keep thinking about, looking at this table, is that one could say basically, the first, the upper half of the table is about site planning. And then the bottom half of the table is which stormwater BNP's you're going to use for which surfaces.
I would modify that slightly by saying the top half of the table is more your site's conditions. And then the bottom half is what you're choosing to do with it.
Right.
Okay.
So I guess going forward, at least in my experience, that usually with stormwater regulations, you don't dip into how you do your site planning or your site characteristics. And you do require, and the state makes us require specific stormwater BNP's to be used or they'd have to provide some sort of performance. And separating the two, I think, might be a thing that we can look at in this area. The stormwater BNP's, I full-heartedly support switching from what we had in the past with the LID overlay and which, I'm sorry, and which BNP's you use to the state standard list of which BNP's you use. The thing that sticks out to me is what do you do with these additional things that were in the LID overlay that are more, I consider those site planning issues, like you can't exceed 15% impervious. You can't, you have to preserve 60% of the forest, that type of thing, or 60% of the land, apparently, in forest. So I think just saying, well, let's just use the new stormwater LID manual, that really only gets you the bottom half of this list, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I think that, just to add to that, this is, this does demonstrate to me that there's, as far as what the LID overlay was expecting and what the new manual is expecting, once you get to the bottom half of the list, they're virtually identical.
Yeah. And so I have no problem retiring that piece of it. The bottom, I'm sorry, the which stormwater BNP's used for which surface and using the state standard issue BNP's for each surface. The other thing that, I guess I'm responding to, what Councilmember Sandberg said, that I would consider prescriptive to use the LID performance standard. But you can't do that if you don't have good soils. And we don't have any good data on what soils, what soils are in this area. So I'm not quite sure what to do going forward with that. I think looking at the zoning and the timeline and why we are where we are with the zoning, I think that'll help quite a bit. I do support the staff recommendation really to explore the three options that have been laid out by the city attorney at the beginning of the meeting, which is do nothing, leave it as it stands. And what does that look like? The hybrid of the two, I guess, is that's what I'm sitting here playing around with. And then the repeal of the LID overlay, that would be interesting to see how that would play out, at least from a, we talked about critical areas ordinances and how you could make those different so that there is something there still instead of just having a complete removal. So I'm definitely curious about those latter two. I don't think doing nothing is an option in my mind, but it's worth exploring and having it to be one of the options. We're totally getting into deliberation before we have public testimony. But anyways, I'll leave it at that. And does any other council member want to speak before we open the floor to the public? Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. One thing that we talk about and we're all familiar with Zone 1, but is there a map that could be put up to make sure everybody in the public understands what Zone 1 is exactly? I think that's a good starting place.
Well, shoot, I don't seem to find it here, but we can describe it very easily. Let me get a really good map here.
All right, we'll go with a good map and then describe it well.
Yeah, essentially what it is, is the areas that are zoned are 5,400A LID. And it basically includes the areas that are generally east and adjacent to 39th Avenue. And of course, the area that, and it kind of, you can just kind of follow this line right here is the general area. You know, there's some R 9,600 here, but it's primarily the, as soon as you start going up the hill, that's where you have 5,400A LID. And of course, the Zone 1 area is it's commonly referred to.
Okay.
Oh, here's one here. And if I may...
Oh, there you go.
The areas that's designated are 5,400A, you can see that right here, LID, is the Zone 1 area.
Okay. And I don't know, have you had, has the, these test pit results been incorporated in the parametrics best available science?
Yes, they've had them. And they're still trying to analyze some of those provisions about them. I know that when I spoke with one of the other parametric scientists, they said, test pits are great and it's kind of like raw data. And it's hard to kind of come up with that evaluation precision. But as Mr. Fan identified, the groundwater table at nine feet is a pretty good condition in the Western Washington area.
Okay. And just trying to bring things down to, you know, more layman terms and all in discussion. So in Zone 1, it, in testimony and everything else, it's very different than the rest of the Fitzgerald sub-area hydrologically, correct?
Boy, that's hard to describe. Because when you look at the critical areas, which are the streams and some of the wetland areas, most of the critical areas, the large areas, are kind of toward the bottom of the western half. The Zone 1 area has a couple of, one or two streams up there and a couple little smaller sized wetland areas. So there is a little less hydrology up there than there is in the balance of the LID overlay area. But there is still some hydrology on the hillside areas that are kind of coming down. There's more of these streams.
But from a stormwater infiltration standpoint, is it very different?
Oh, do you want to answer that one? Okay, thank you.
What's really difficult in answering your question is that there are broad scale things that give general indicators about good for LID or not good for LID. And the first one that's often used is the soil types. And there are A, B, C, or D. Those are the types that are indicated. And As and Bs are generally considered good. And Cs are generally considered pretty marginal. And Ds are usually considered poor. So from a planning perspective, we can talk about them. We even have the soils maps. And I can show you kind of one half of the answer to the question. The other half is that no matter what you do, no matter if you have As or Ds, if you're going to go to your site and you're going to be doing a site development and you have to demonstrate your application LID or feasibility LID, you still have to do a site-specific test. So I can tell you one side on the planning and the other is that it's always conditional if you're in the planning stuff. And it's always subject to a site-specific test regardless of how good or bad the overall indicators are. You have to do site-specific work. And it's required in the manuals. And so that's why it's kind of, it's a difficult question to answer. But I would say that, you know, 90% of the time, if you have As soils, you're going to be in really good shape. 90% of the time, if you have D soils, you're going to be in pretty bad shape. But you still have to do site-specific tests.
Okay. I want to thank Councilmember Sandberg for her comments. I too feel like I'm very comfortable with the idea of taking Zone 1 out of the mix. I think that's an appropriate thing to do. Unfortunately, it, I wish Sonoma County would have worked with us a lot before they started developing up there along the hill. But I support the idea of taking Zone 1 and changing what we have going on there. I'm supportive of any type of lot clustering to minimize the footprint of development. And I would support any, not necessarily mandate, but incentives to have more reforestation as part of development in there. I don't know that I'm ready to give up the R 5,400A there, but I think that we can, we can talk. And the idea of having some incentives along with... can talk, and the idea of having some incentives along with taking them out of the the LID overlay, I think that's a great start. The, I just think from a topography standpoint, there's obviously limitations. And again, there's some, as was stated earlier, there is some wetlands. And so there are, there continue, there's continued challenges there already. So I I support the idea of taking them out and incentives for lot clustering and reforestation.
Any other council questions? Are we ready for public testimony? Okay, so we're going to go into the public testimony portion, and I have nobody on the sign-up sheet, except I have one of these, and it's Kai Nelson.
Kai Nelson, Bothell resident. I was asked to read this letter from Bob Vick, Senior Vice President of Phoenix Development, and I believe you all received a copy as well. Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, I fully appreciate the challenges that the current Bothell City Council has in working to arrive at a scenario that protects both the environment and the property rights of the citizens living in the Fitzgerald Hills subarea, especially in light of the recent ruling by the Growth Hearings Board, which denied the proposed changes to the Nikfuchapa environmental overlay. I attended all three of the stakeholder workshops. I would like to thank Tom Burdette and staff for their effort to find a pathway that makes sense for all involved. However, I will not be able to attend the June 28 Council meeting, as I will be in California for a birth of a grandchild. This letter is in response to the Council's request to hear the perspective on this process from the development community. Phoenix Development LLC has enjoyed a relationship with many of the property owners on the hill, Zone 1, that goes back over 10 years. And we have made purchase proposals in the past to some of the group of owners on the hill. We are not currently pursuing any development on the hill due to the constraints of the Nikfuchapa overlay. These constraints include 50% forested requirement, 20% effective impervious surface limitation, the limitations on disturbance of the site for grading for building pads and roads, and the pathways for critters that bisect the hill and lead to nowhere. Even the definition of forest seems to be in question. The loss of buildable area produced by these limitations renders the hill impractical for residential development or any significant development return in value to the landowners. The city has again relied upon the best available science assessments of the baseline conditions for their environmental consultant parametrics, as necessary under the weight of Growth Hearings Board ruling on the prior proposed changes to the Nikfuchapa code. The various pathways presented included a 65% forested condition and 10% effective impervious limitation, 6510. So the various scenarios as presented at those workshops did not begin to provide any relief from the challenges to the development on the hill. The impact of the hydrology in Zone 1 is not the equivalent of those parcels in closer proximity of North Creek, those located west of 35th. The city has in effect acknowledged that Zone 1 is different than the westerly portion of Fitzgerald subarea by the current zoning within two portions of the subarea, with the zoning on the hill, Zone 1, being 5400A versus R1 zoning in the other portions of the subarea. Doesn't the city have the obligation to apply the best available science to Zone 1 based on the characteristics that actually exist in the portion of Fitzgerald area? Is it necessary for the 6510 baseline to be applied evenly over the entire Coal Creek watershed? Shouldn't the city look at having parametrics do a more specific review of the Zone 1 conditions as different from the properties located closer to North Creek? The applied 6510 baseline is prohibitive to real use of this land for any significant development. So I'm out of time, but I could come back up with.
Are you guys okay with extending his time so he can finish the letter? Please continue your letter.
The other significant constraint on development within the Nikfuchapa overlay are the restrictions on the grading site. The code requirements minimize disturbance to the soils in the construction of any project or buildings, with the effect of eliminating any mass grading and preparation of the roads and actual building pads. The example of possible construction techniques provided by staff in one of the three, three workshops was building on pin piles with little area disturbance around the houses. That concept is possibly marketable on a small scale to a unique set of buyers and not something a builder would be willing to risk millions of dollars in the experiment. The test pits on the hill indicate a deep water table, so there should be no concern about subsurface flows. Terry Clem will be addressing this issue in his testimony on the 28th. The surface flows can be handled with the LID code revisions being modified citywide. The current code provides for the developer to go off-site and add forest within the subarea to substitute for forest needed to meet the 50% requirement. The transfer is based on the density of the underlying zone and the net number of units gained in the sending parcel. The typical example from the R1 zone parcels is a two or three units transferred from a five-acre parcel. If the forest of the issue, then why not give a full transfer based on the addition of forest by area acre for acre? Some property owners west of 35th may be happy to receive more trees and possibly compensation for taking the trees. This would just be a better way to provide the option to a developer. I appreciate your attention to these thoughts and suggestions and your efforts to find a solution that is equitable for all concerned. Thank you, Bob Vick. And just me, just really quick, just please treat Zone 1 independently like the rest of Bothell.
Okay, that's the only person we have signed up. Is there anybody else that would like to provide public comment? Please give your name for the record.
Good evening, Council. Kudos to Bob Vick for for wading through that legalese and confirming that all paths the way it's currently set up lead back to 6510. But as many, many have personally, have previously said, you need to treat Zone 1 differently than the broader subarea, simply because it is different. And to that end, tonight, I want to revisit the groundwater issue, and we've been talking about that a lot tonight, as I believe there is new and demonstrative evidence that there is no or little groundwater of any consequence in the Z1 slope between 39th and 45th. And up until recently, we only had the pit test results, of which I passed out to each one of you tonight, and you've referenced those already, to refer to. Unfortunately, no one seemed to take these seriously. I don't know how much they figured into the parametrics study, but I didn't ever hear anything back about the importance of those pit tests. Well, now we have essentially two more pits. One is an excavation for a home site, and the other is a large vault on a construction site, both of which are far larger than the original test pits. And regarding the vault, the outflow runs southwest managing, matching the observation by Tom Berry on water flow on 39th. So what I'd like to show you here is, is that right? There we go. This is a diagram that depicts the slope of the land from 39th down here up to 45th up here. And imagine yourself down on 240th, just looking at this hill, this mountain north towards 228th at the top. There's a new home, there's a new home site going in at the bottom of the hill by Mr. Pham, and he goes back 90 feet directly into the hillside, creating an 11-foot-high wall of dirt. In that, in that footing area at the bottom, there was no water whatsoever. If you go up to the slope away as to where the test pits are, there was nine of those, and they ranged from 10 to 16 feet, and no significant water was found. At the top, there is a huge construction project going on west of 45th, 97 homes are going in there. And the squiggly line there is kind of the contour that they're grading right now, and they've gone 25 feet below grade. My property line is indicated there, right at the point where the where the vault is. The vault is 250 feet long, 45 feet wide, and about 12 feet deep. None of these areas have any water in them. They are perfect soil in terms of gravel and sand and loam and everything that provides for drainage. So I, you know, I just think it's important, I don't, I don't have a geological or hydrology degree or letters behind my name, but I do have eyes, and I can tell you that all three pit sites are dry. So I hope you can also see Zone 1 needs to be evaluated separately, and tonight, I'm asking that you take steps to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to extend the meeting?
Move to extend to 9:30.
Moved by Councilmember Sandberg, taken by Councilmember McNeil to extend till 9:30. Passed unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. Is there any further public testimony? One at a time, go ahead. Councilmember, or Council, former Councilmember Ewing.
Patrick Ewing, former Councilmember, and I hadn't planned on talking, so I don't have anything prepared, but I feel compelled, looking at the eyes up here, because I've walked a few miles in your shoes. I was here when the original zoning in the Fitzgerald area, we went through a long process to where we got. We had scientific studies ahead of time to guide us, to help us decide, make these decisions, where in this case, it seems like that you're putting the cart in front of the horse, you're trying to make some decisions without getting the updates to the science that we thought we were going to get through the stakeholders or before the stakeholder process. So I I don't think you have the science to be making some of the decisions or going in some of the directions you might want to go. So it would be good to get the science done so that you know where the shallow aquifers are and whether Zone 1 really is unique or it's not. The studies we had said that this whole area, it met the Littlewitz test. It meant that the the wetlands were large in scope and complex in nature and interconnected. And I don't know if those studies were wrong, we got it wrong. You know, we had, when we went through this process, we did have to go through it quickly because we were under time constraints to get it done. So yes, we probably made some mistakes. We should be fixing the language that's not clear. We should get the numbers right. If we're off on the numbers, let's get it right. But let's use the science to help guide us rather than trying to guess and then backfill with science later. You know, one of the options in front of us, we could have greatly increased buffer widths. We didn't do that because we thought that was more onerous than trying to come up with, you know, the LID that would be less onerous to the property areas, owners. I've heard it, people say that, you know, they just can't sell their property. Well, there are people in this area, I'm not sure, well, in all of the zones, that have sold their properties. There are developments that have been made. So the language apparently does work for some property owners, maybe not all, but I don't know that we necessarily need to throw out all of the code versus trying to fix what's wrong with what is there. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it was Mr. Berry, I saw your hand go up.
Tom Berry, good evening. First of all, David Gerard told us in a walkthrough on the property in 2007, David Gerard of Parametrics, that we would have to assume groundwater because the best available science that was done never came to our properties ever, unless they snuck in. That's not what I was going to talk about tonight. I was going to talk about our experience growing apples there. We dug or drilled thousands of holes, literally, in the property, developing the orchard. We dug some deep holes using heavy equipment. I I know my ground. We use the sieves, very little water comes out of the seam that we've talked about, I think, Councilperson Sandberg and I spoke email about that. What I would invite you to do, a very simple test, is drive up our road and look at it. The primary water that I use is now coming out over the drainage ditch to each, east of 39th Avenue, because there's no maintenance, the ditch is full. The water runs along the hard surface. You can, you can look at it and look at the direction of that water. It's very little water. It goes south. It goes through the culverts. If you look at CanyonParkOrchard.com, it's all diagrammed very well. Stormwater acts as a tracer, mixes with it, shows you where it goes. It's trapped in 236 southeast, it goes west downhill to 35th, takes a hard left on the east side of 35th, goes to 240th down south, goes underground. The engineering department can probably tell you where it goes from there. The point is, it doesn't go to Coal Creek. So that's, that's, that's a pretty simple test. It's all observable, everything. So I'll leave it at that for now, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Please state your name in the microphone. I should know your name by now, shouldn't I?
I'll wear a name tag from this point forward. Hi, I'm Brian Pearson. If I understood the comments from Mr. Fenn earlier, it seems to me that there's a lot of angst over, are the soils good, are they not good? Is this going to work? Is it not going to work? But if I understood what he said correctly, I think what he said is, they're going to have to be tested at the site-specific level in order for anything to proceed anyhow and conform to the requirements of the manual. And if that's the direction we're heading anyhow, why not just go there and let the development happen if it can happen? And if the property doesn't stand up to those tests, then it can't happen, or it's got to be, you know, redirected into ways that it can be done more effectively. The city stands to receive pretty significant uptake in property value. We were talking earlier tonight about revenue needs, you know, they don't go away, and here's an opportunity to see a sensible development, whether we leave the zoning as it is or modify it to some of the levels that have been suggested there. You're probably talking, I did a little back-of-the-envelope math, somewhere between 60 to 100 million dollars of increase in property value over a project of this size, 30 to 40 acres, if you put it all together, or some combination of that. Even at R9600, just simple math, you get to a decent-sized number, and property tax revenue on that much, and it's every year, right? There's impact fees, there's all the kind of one-time stuff that would be dealt with as the project is being developed, but you've created a perpetual stream of revenue that I think could be used very effectively in a lot of different ways. So I just wanted to remind us all of that possibility. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other, go ahead, Ms. Perry?
Thank you, Andrea Perry. I would encourage you to go with the hybrid approach. I think that the the new stormwater and LID regulation statewide, there are a lot of things in there that are better than what we, what is in there currently, but I also think that there are some very important elements of the current LID that you need to work through and make sure that the results that are provided with those rules and regulations still occur. So I would encourage, I don't think it's the option of just leave it as it is, could even work, because you're going to, you're going to be required to go with state LID. So, and to just do nothing is not an option, so please consider the hybrid. I did send email this week, it didn't make the packet, I'm, I just want to make sure that it is part of the public record for the hearing, that I support going to, looking at R9600 for Zone 1 and the and clustering. But I also think that you absolutely need to make sure that you've got the language in there so that it, you can reduce all the lots, but don't have the loophole of allowing extensive high-density development. but don't have the loophole of allowing extensive, high-density development in that area because I don't think that that, for many reasons, besides the roads and the sewer systems, I don't think it's good for the environment. So I would encourage you to look at Zone 1. I don't know the answer of taking Zone 1 out of the equation from what, when Patrick and I were on council. The information that we had is that all of this area is hydraulically connected. So you really do need to have the science show you that if you're thinking about taking off those groundwater stipulations for LID in Zone 1, you have to have the science to back that up. And it may exist. And I think it's good that you have the test pit results and that the public will be able to see those too. And this new information that Mr. Clem brought up, that's interesting. And I'd like to review that. But I do know that there was a short plat, the Ricketts Short Plat, that was used with the current LID regulations, and that seemed to go through. And I believe that you got that from the Fishers in an email. And I want to make sure that that also is in the public record for this hearing to take a look at that. But I think that would be interesting for the public to have access to as well. Any questions? Thank you.
We're good, thank you. See, Clerk, that email is in the record, I believe, isn't it? The Ricketts, okay. Please state your name for the record.
Jim Phillips. I'm really up here to try to hopefully give you a little bit of history that, that you're not aware of. The reason this all started is because 20 years ago, Phillips and Berry made application for a rezone. After 13 or 14 years, the city finally, after, anyway, they finally decided to look at it. And what they told us was, well, you know, we don't like to spot zone. We're talking about two 5-acre parcels. We don't like to spot zone. So could you get the rest of the homeowners in that area together? Mr. Berry took it on himself to contact all of the other homeowners. And we met at the Pearson's house several times and came down here. And then this, after probably a year or more, the city said, well, you know, really, we should probably look at the whole area. And that's how we got pulled into the Fitzgerald subarea. We have never had the Phillips-Berry application for, for our rezone ever looked at. And that's, and that's really what we asked for. I did hear somebody ask a question with regards to septic tanks. Well, we've been under contract with 11 developers, 11, that have gone to the city and dropped the contracts. But every one of them, we're going to hook up the sewer. So that hopefully answers a question with regards to sewer. It's just, that property is unique. Once you cross 39th Avenue heading west, it's all flat land. And there's bogs, there's, there's swamps, there's creeks, there's so on. But there's not on that hillside. There is a couple of spots that do have wetlands. But you've got a critical area of ordinance. You've got more ordinances than you ever know what to do with that take into account any possible thing that pops up and protects the environment. That's what they're there for. And that's what they've been developed for. You're worried about possibly, you know, another lawsuit or something not working with growth management. The new LID that's coming out should be virtually unchallengeable. You know, I mean, that's kind of what it's there for. And it's going to be statewide. We really think, I will wrap it up real quick. We really think the homeowners there really think that dropping the zoning down from 5400A to 7200, and with the lot size averaging, there could still be additional land that would be treed and so on, would be, would be probably more appropriate with the citywide LID. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to provide comment?
Hello, I'm Craig Bernhardt, Bothell resident. Just a couple of things that I'd like to say. First of all, Zone 1 is different than the, the rest of the Fitzgerald subarea. So I would be in favor of...
Apologies, then, Rip. But could you grab that mic and just put it a little closer to your? There you go. You're good to go.
I got it. It is different and it should be separated. Secondly, I do think that option 3 of going with the statewide new LID solves a lot of the problems. Third issue is, in terms of what the zoning should be. The problem is, in the beginning, we were trying to figure out how we solve this problem of getting some development. The developers couldn't make it work at 5400 with a 50% reforestation. They're not going to be able to make it work at 9600 because that's basically no net change. And the cost of development, it won't work. And then the final issue is, if you really want to see what the hillside looks like, go up to the development that they're doing on 45th. Look at the soils. You will see there is no water problem. That is the best indication of what that hillside consists of. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Comments? Okay. So now we're supposed to do further council deliberation and hopefully provide some direction. Did you want to couch the direction in which you'd like us to all weigh in on?
Well, I think it's along the lines of what Attorney Massal gave us at the beginning. And we'll proceed in that direction to look at those three options with the collection of information and comments that we received from the council members tonight, unless there's any, any other comments you'd like to make.
Oh, yeah. We've got comments. Deputy Mayor?
I understand it's probably not within the scope of work, but would it be possible for Parametrics to take a little field trip and look at those, the vault and the, the other development that was talked about tonight?
Yeah, I think we can do that. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councilmember Agnew?
I'm not sure how the rest of the council members feel, but I think we have two options. I don't think leaving it the same would help anyone. So I'm in favor of looking at the two options. I also am in favor of trying to see if we can rezone Zone 1. I think we need to eliminate Zone 1 from this problem. I think we do have a lot of science to back that up. But I'd be in favor of that.
Councilmember Sandberg?
So, Bruce, back in the day, when we were working on a lot clustering ordinance that met an unfortunate death, one of the provisions that we wrote was essentially for every square foot that a lot is reduced, that square foot was retained in open space. Is that, is that your recollection?
Actually, that's what the current Plan Unit Development Ordinance does.
Okay. And so maybe the percentage forest coverage requirement now in the LID is too onerous. But that concept of reducing lot size in order to gain open space is a logical one and already present in our existing code in the PUD?
Yes, it is, yes.
Okay. So I think what I proposed was maybe closer in line with option 2, that which is the hybrid of the, of the two approaches. I proposed removing the LID overlay from Zone 1 and instead have the 2016 Stormwater Manual apply there as it will apply throughout the entire city. And to have the underlying zone be R9600. And then the hybrid comes in is because our current R9600 zone doesn't allow for significant lot size reduction. There's a little bit of averaging, but not the kind of lot size reduction that we're talking about here. And so in that sense, we would, if we had the R9600 zone in Zone 1 with the provisions to reduce lot size in order to incentivize open space retention and forest retention, is that something that you, that matches what staff's thought is for option, option number 2?
In general, yes. Part of the issue, however, is, of course, within the current LID overlay, the Nick Fitchop, if you would. The requirement for forest is quite substantial. 50% of the site must be retained as forest. It might be difficult to try and do that in a one-for-one trade-off. There may be some elements that we may have to take a little bit more look as we kind of go into some of the details on this.
Well, and then we have a table in the best available science study that shows roughly 35% forest covered, coverage exists now.
Correct, that's right, yes.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not real thrilled about directing Parametrics to do a lot more study. I mean, that's just going to add to the cost. And I'm not sure that, that, that's going to provide us more information that we need to, to make a decision that's going to be consistent with the Growth Management Hearing Board's decision. So I, I'm, and I'm not supportive of us spending more money on best available science. I agree that we, we have a framework. We have some site-specific information that was shown to us tonight. And I think the time for all of that really specific site survey is at the time of development where they, where the, the cost of that, those studies are born through the, the development planning process.
We'll take that into consideration. I took the comment as really just being extra field work for reconnaissance of present conditions, not extensive analytics.
Okay, great. And then in terms of the developer comment, obviously, we don't have a product yet for them to comment on. But I remember we, back when we were, we were developing Ordinance 2163, didn't we get a developer, it was a, it was a memo about the development community's response to the regulations that, that were proposed? And didn't they say that they were okay at the time? Is that, is that Ordinance 2163 that, that they were comfortable with? Maybe you can dig back up that, that, that memo from the developers' community.
Actually, what that was, is that was a memorandum where it was basically an interview of three different development corporate companies that had done a, take a look at the, the old, if you would, ordinance, not 2163. That was the gist of the changes that were resulted from 2163, the ordinance 2163. So essentially, what you have is the, the development interview, developer interviews are based upon the current regulations in place today.
Is that like Ordinance 1988?
1988, yep, exactly.
Okay. Well, maybe we can dig that one back up and present that to council.
Yeah, we can certainly find that.
Okay. I think that's it for me.
Shall I go? Anybody else want, okay. So my direction is the do-nothing approach is not an approach that's acceptable to me. The hybrid approach or repealing the LID overlay, I'd like to look at both of those options. Removing, so I, I think we're, it's, because Zone 1 is not in our code. I think just saying, removing the LID overlay from the 5400A is the direction that I would, I would like that to be scoped out. With the remainder of the area, leaving the LID overlay in place, I would like to look at that as well as, with the one exception of removing the BMP selection criteria in the LID overlay and just using the statewide, which stormwater BMPs you're going to use for the remaining, the remaining zones. I think it's important to look at that. That was interesting in the Phoenix letter about the forest coverage swapping, you know, seeing how, if that's even legal, can we do that on private property with easements? Or like, how would that all play out? You know, an IOU isn't going to work probably for, for allowing that type of swapping to occur. So I think those are the, the notes that I had here. And I just wanted to say one thing about best available science. And I know Paul professionally, and Parametrics, Parametrics is a great company. The type of work that we're probably talking about, if we want to have real good rigor science for this size of an area, is probably in the tune of $400,000 to $500,000. I have two projects right now I'm doing for this similar area. And it would take about two years from now to actually get the studies done. So I know that's not in the interest of the property owners. I don't think it's in the interest of the city to drag this on. And so, in the absence of that, I think we need to move forward with trying to find some, some middle ground. I guess I'm not too adverse to potentially being in a, in a legal issue with this, with this situation. We've, we've done it every time we've changed the code. So I guess that, that's not really a big deterrent for me. I think what we want to do is to try to find something to put this behind the city. This has been going on for a really long time. And especially for the, the property owners that are, are, you know, personally impacted by it. It's just, it's time. It's time, we need to figure this out. And yeah, we can go do more studies. But I, I, somebody reminded me, I voted no on the best available science study that we are doing right now and for that exact reason that I knew is about an order of magnitude lower than the amount of money that you really do need if you want to do a best available science study. So that's the direction I have. Is there anybody else that wants to provide comment? That hasn't already? Okay. So that brings us close to the end of our agenda. So we have an executive session tonight, and I have notes on what that's for. But the city manager's report, it's interesting, you want to give your report now and so that we can go to executive session and, okay, go ahead. Is that okay with council? I'm just switching the agenda on the fly? Okay.
In, in light of the hour, I'll try to be quick.
Yeah, before, so do you, do you want us to extend? We need to extend anyway, so let's do that real quick. Is there a motion to extend?
Move to extend to 10.
Moved by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Councilmember McNeil to extend till 10.
If I may, I'm, I'm so sorry, I have to interrupt.
In the middle of a motion.
Would it be possible for us to continue this hearing to July 19?
I'll do that just right after we get this vote off.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Go ahead, place your votes to extend the meeting. Or do you want us to vote? No, 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 don't vote on that. Okay, so we're going to move, we have a motion and a second to extend the meeting till 10 o'clock. Let's do it in verbal, just raise your hand and say aye if you agree. Aye. Opposed. Councilmember Spivey in the negative passes to extend till 10 o'clock. Moved, so we're going to vote to extend the public hearing until, was that July 19? July 19? Do we need to take a vote on that? All right. Motion on the, oh, yeah, I can't make a motion. Can I have a motion to extend?
So moved.
The public hearing?
Second.
Till July 19? Moved by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by just about everybody. Let's see, Deputy Mayor, do your, place your vote. One more time. Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused to extend the public hearing on the Fitzgerald area till July 19. And...
And now we're all set. Interim city manager, please give us your report.
Three things I'd like to report to council. One, to get a little direction. Again, my title is interim city manager. That means that I turn into a pumpkin sometime this fall and go back to being semi-retired. We need to get the city manager recruitment process underway if we're going to get that ball rolling. What I would like, if there's just consent of council, I don't know that I need a motion, but if everyone's in agreement, what I'll do is get some requests for proposals going and hopefully have something for you to look at in the way of proposals on recruiting firms and prices and timelines, possibly by our retreat on the 16th. So if there's approval on that, then I'll get the ball rolling. I know different members of council have gotten suggestions on who we might want to solicit proposals from. So if you get all that information, we'll get the ball rolling. So I'm getting nods. So, okay, I'm going to do that. The second thing is, I think I previously reported to council that the individual we'd been talking to for the city attorney position accepted another position. And we've had some discussions in-house among staff and with the interim city attorney and the current assistant city attorney down to my right. Oh, he's over there. And Paul really has, frankly, all the skills we need, but he's still learning in some of the land use areas. One of the reasons we brought Scott on as city attorney was his broad municipal management background, or attorney experience background, but also his strength in land use. What we're thinking we'd like to do right now would be to flip those roles and ask our assistant city attorney to actually take the lead as an interim city attorney assignment and have Scott continue on as our outside counsel, but dealing with land use and any general municipal law questions that our interim city attorney would need. This will do a couple of things, I think. One, it'll lower our costs in the interim for interim city attorney costs, and that's no reflection on Scott's billable rates. He's actually pretty affordable for a private sector consultant attorney, but they're still more expensive than in-house. And so I think it'll save us some money. But additionally, it, at the very least, will grow us a stronger assistant city attorney. And I think it'll give Paul a chance to show his stuff. So our thinking is, and this was frankly, kind of a group simultaneous discussion that had several people approach me on, and I think it's a good way to go. So the caveat would be that it is, as long as the council feels you're getting good legal advice, as long as I feel that I'm getting and we're offering good legal advice, and as long as Paul feels that he's comfortable. If at any point we're not comfortable with it, we'll flip back. But I think it'd be a way to go here for the next five, six months. That would allow us to coordinate the hiring of the new city attorney to track with the hiring of the new city manager. That was a concern of all three of our city attorney finalists, that they didn't know exactly who they were going to work for because they didn't know who the regular city manager was going to be. So I think we'd be able to time it such that the regular manager would then be able to make the hire decision with council input on the city attorney. So that's the second thing. If that makes some sense, we'll make this switch as of July 1. The last item was giving update on where we are with the ethics complaints. The, as council knows, the Stedman complaint was resolved with a finding of no violation. The Spivey complaint, as I'll refer to it, has been withdrawn. But I think council needs to have a discussion about, is the code working the way you intended? What I would like to suggest is we get the ethics officer here. One of his jobs in the code, under the code, is to advise council on how that works. And I'd like to get that scheduled as soon as possible, maybe July 12. Have a study session discussion with council. Bring forward any amendments that you want. Get those done in July. And then Mr. Spivey, I'm referring to the citizen Spivey role, can do as he chooses on refiling or not. And then we can go from there. But I'd like to get this matter resolved. I'd like to keep us focused on the goals and the priorities of the council and what comes out of the council retreat. And it's what I'd like to recommend we do as far as where we are with the ethics complaint and going forward to get the decks cleared on that. So if that sounds reasonable, that's what we'll set in motion. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there any comments? Anybody wants to respond? Feel free. Okay. Everything sounds good from up here. So we are going to go to executive session for, I already went over this. For about 50 minutes on property acquisition, personnel matters and-- Oh, yeah, I didn't say 150 minutes, did I? Okay. I'm going to say 30 minutes because I just kind of know how we are in executive session. So it's property acquisition, personnel matters, and litigation matters. And we don't plan to come out and take any action after executive session. So we'll basically be adjourned after the executive session. All right?